All right, thanks for coming. Full seats tonight. All right, start with the chairman's report. Sign the PW-19-04 for Ellen Jameson. PW-19-05 for the Board of Selectmen and Ellen Jameson. PW-19-06 Registration Fee. Alicia Greco Mass Municipal Association. 2019 Annual Meeting. Signed PW-19-07 Daily News Legal Ads and Verizon Wireless. Monthly iPad Expenses for the Board of Selectmen. And Town Hall and Police Department Committee has been meeting weekly, Friday mornings. So this will be ongoing in the future. We have grants, gifts, and donations. We have a vote to accept $2,708 in grant money for Coastal Trails Coalition Incorporated.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Discussion?
Think we should thank them for their -- for moving this along?
Agreed.
Is that for planning?
It's for the Board of Assembly.
Sure. Does it have plans?
It's for -- it's the final portion of our original obligation under the original contract. We had $12,659, which is half.
Good.
Thank you.
Excellent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Z-tron radio console donated by the town of Merrimack to the Newbury Police Department.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Discussion?
What is it?
Can you enlighten us on that one, Tracy?
I don't know the details of that one. I just know that Merrimack had a second one and rather that they were gonna discard it and Chief asked if they could use it for a secondary dispatch area, but I don't know the details of how big it is or any of the details.
Thanks for the generosity of the people of Merrimack, the town of Merrimack. All those in favor?
Aye.
World War II Memorial Donation. Say up nine -- this is to move the monument, Byfield, off of Pratt's property back onto town property. $975 are up to as of September 2018.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Side note, the tree is down.
It is down? One or two come down? Did one or two come down?
Just one?
Just the one?
The dead one. Mostly dead ones.
Yeah. There was two mostly dead ones, though. One was closer to the -- the only one came down, right?
Pretty sure it was just the one down.
We have a public hearing coming after 7:15. I think we have time for appointments. We have some fiscal year 2019 appointments for Conservation Commission, Cultural Council, and Finance Committee. And we will -- we can start with Cultural Council. Margaret B. Russell, 9/25/18 through 6/30/2021.
Motion to appoint?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And Lloyd Hemel, 9/25/18 through 6/30/2021.
Motion to appoint?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We have Mr. Kevin Stromsky for Conservation Commission. Three-year term, 9/25/18 through 6/30/2021.
Motion to appoint?
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, that fills the board, right?
I believe so.
Yeah.
That's good.
That's good. What else we got?
Fincom. Three-year term. Joseph Ali, 9/25/18 through 6/30/2021.
Motion to appoint?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
John, how long do you think it'll take for your --
Well, I can get it done in less than an hour easy. More or less than ten minutes. If you've got another ten minutes, it may not be enough.
Okay.
So, but thank you.
We can move on. Vote to sign the 11/6/18 State Election War.
So move. Seconds.
All those in favor? We have some surplus declarations. 1993 John Year loader. 2009 Ford Crown Victoria. And a 1996 Alumacraft Lunker with motor.
Motion to declare surplus.
Second.
Any discussion?
What is a Lunker?
I know, but they're very --
It's gotta be some type of boat.
Some type of boat. I'll just say.
The boat that filled 1996.
Funny name for it.
Yeah, I think that name was -- maybe it's still around.
Maybe that's where the Klunker program?
Yeah. That one avoided the Klunker program. All those in favor?
Aye.
We have a memo from the Board of -- and I guess I'll skip to some correspondence for a few minutes here. We have a memo from the Board of Health regarding Town of Newbury Flu and Vaccine Clinic. Tuesday, 10/9/2018, from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. in the second-floor hearing room. Great opportunity to get your vaccines. And they have -- it seems like they have several options of vaccines and they're mindful of people with allergies.
Yeah, that's one I haven't seen before.
Yep, so.
Is that free?
That's a new question.
Bring your insurance card, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and there's a lot of different options of what you can get, of what type of flu vaccine you can get, which flus it covers, so it's pretty comprehensive as far as taking care of our citizens, so.
All right, more correspondence. We got an email from Jonathan Higgins in the Speed Pod Technologies Trial on the grain removing algae from the Upper Green Pond. And he's making progress and thanks the town for the opportunity to further his work. And he also adds that in the future he would be interested in continuing to develop this technology and clean up our pond, so thank you, Mr. Jonathan Higgins. Also, we received a thank you note from Beth Yando, Principal of Newbury Elementary School, thanking the town for the repairs of the small gymnasium floor and making life better for our students and safer. She wrote us just a nice, short note. Let's see if I tagged it.
Cut it right here if you want.
Yeah, yeah. I can tag that one on. "To whom it may concern, I'm writing to thank the Town of Newbury for your generous contribution to the Newbury Elementary School to replace the small gymnasium floor. It looks wonderful. With your support, the students and staff, as well as the many events held in this gymnasium, will now be able to enjoy this area in a safe environment without the need for mats to cover the old flooring. We are fortunate to have the support of such a dedicated town. Sincerely, Beth Yando, Principal."
Nice to get a nice mail on occasion.
It is. We have the Whittier Annual Operational Report. Joanna True, of Byfield, is our Whittier representative. I thank her for that. This is correspondence from Joanna True and Maureen Lynch, Superintendent. We have 27 total students in Whittier, 2018 graduates. There'll be six of them from Newbury. And the cost of Newbury for the school year 2017 and 2018 was $453,184. Again, I'd like to thank Joanna True for stepping up to that position when we needed somebody to. We have a letter from the Department of Environmental Protection regarding a draft waterways license for the bridge on Cat's Island. And perhaps, are there any more steps we need to take on that, Tracy? I mean, that's pretty much done.
No.
So that telephone pole and other old materials bridge that's in tough shape is gonna get replaced, and that's always good news.
Yeah, to hold out the water.
Yeah, I think the one thing to add is--
They could open it up.
Yeah, that's been a colossal tidal restriction for all the marshes. Actually, on the inside, there's tidal flow in every direction, but especially on the west side of that, there's a really starved marsh with salt water, so that's gonna be a quick work. What can you think of the name of yours for Fish and Wildlife?
Pat?
Pat.
Pat Hocky's. Pat Hocky's just worked as hard as she could on that.
That's one of the things she's tried to get, you know, she's had a great job.
The better flow actually helps keep the weeds down in the marsh. Am I correct in thinking that?
All the invasives, you know, but they can't stand the tide.
They can't stand drones alone.
Yeah. And the solidity rises.
Right. So that's good news.
One more covert bill.
Right.
Yeah, it's about the size of less than a covert. So it's really collapsing, yes.
We have a letter from Giusti Hinkston and Company regarding our annual audit, and it's basically an audit engagement letter, letting us know the things they look for, what to expect. We have a few more minutes to kill here.
Review of minutes?
Review of meeting minutes.
Motion to approve August 28, 2018, meeting minutes?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any meeting updates?
Well, as you said, the building committee meetings have been going on every Friday. I think they're -- we're making pretty good progress as far as making sure the program works for a combined building. And everyone is welcome to attend at 7:00 a.m. It's lovely. We bring coffee and--
Right here.
Donuts. Right here in this room. And, yeah, we're making progress, and by next Tuesday we'll have something to present back to us.
May I have my department's each one, please?
Oh, Mike. Glad you popped in.
The console.
The consoles. Could you shed a little light on that?
Yes. Our dispatch center, we even, the primary dispatch position, we use what's called a Z-tron console, and what it does, it combines police fire radios and emergency management radios all into one mic, and it's very easy for dispatchers to use. We just didn't have a similar console for the secondary dispatch position. And I heard through the grapevine that Merrimack was getting rid of one of theirs, because they were upgraded to something else, and just so happened that that was the exact console that we used, so cheap shares and the Merrimack Board of Selectmen were very gracious in donating that to us, so I thank them very much.
Yeah, that's great.
And what it will do is it will make it seamless to slide from one dispatch position over to the other, so somebody coming in during an emergency--
Familiar.
--will have the exact same circumstances at both positions.
Right, perfect. One thing I was remiss on, should we write a letter to Merrimack?
Yeah, I think so.
I sent one from the Police Department, but it'd be fantastic.
I think we should, probably, because--
Motion?
Seconds.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for following up on that. Good work.
Thank you very much.
In other meeting updates, I attended the Rec Committee meeting today. First thing is they're still looking for more members that'd like to have larger participation. And they're gonna bring forward policy to us shortly on the use of the building, which is either imminently getting into occupancy or should already have it. And they wanna change the fee schedule, so you wanna put out your feelers to people, but ideas on that, just so--
Change what, John?
The fee schedule for the fields. So that's coming down the line. But I went over and had a tour of the building. Looks really nice.
Does it?
So--
I saw it when it was almost done, but I hadn't seen it completed.
Yeah, when I got a draft of the policy and I wanted to see it, because it didn't make sense without walking through the building as far as how they were dividing things up. I'd suggest everyone go in and take a gander at it, because it came together pretty well.
Good. Very good.
I think we're at 7:15?
Yeah. So come on up if you'd like. This is continued from 8/28/18 in accordance with Chapter 138, Section 12 of the General Laws of Massachusetts, application of Bob Lobster LLC, 49 per mile in Turnpike, Newbury, Mass. for a retail wine and malt beverages-only license. And come on up, just state your name, so you can be on camera and on record.
Okay.
It's my understanding that you want to continue to 11/13?
Correct.
Okay. So you folks have time to work on some things?
Correct.
Okay.
So I guess first motion to open the -- or continue the public -- open the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so I should restate myself. It's my understanding that you folks wanna continue to 11/13/2018 at 7:15 p.m.
Correct, yes, please.
So you have an opportunity to work on some things, some details.
That's right.
Okay.
Motion to continue the public hearing to November 13 at 7:15 p.m.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
See you then.
Thank you.
All right. John, I think we're down to you. You're gonna vote us up.
Hey, you've got a lot of important things to deal with. Well, first I want to--
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I want to apologize for sort of taking advantage of you, but part of the stormwater thing is getting the word out to as many people as possible. We had a public meeting upon the Notice of Intent that is due the 1st of October, a few weeks back, but, you know, they watch your meetings. I don't think I ever, you know, and I don't think anyone's gonna see that unless they stumble on it. It is on the website, so this is gonna be some more repetition of that one. But wait, what? The stormwater thing started way back in 1969. I was in Australia at the time. I wasn't in the States. I'd been in Cleveland on my previous job a couple of times, and I wasn't terribly surprised when I read in the paper that the Cuyahoga River caught fire. The Cuyahoga runs right through Cleveland, and it's aligned on both sides with industry who were dumping whatever they had into the river. And a Lackawanna train went by, threw some sparks into the river, and off the river went. It caught fire. It got back at the railroad, because among other things, it burned the railroad bridge to the ground. But eventually it got put out. But Time Magazine made a big deal of it, and that was really the genesis of the most recent aspect of the environmental movement. People said rivers catching fire is not a good idea. Let's do something about it. So the Clean Water Act was passed a couple of years later. This fire happened in '69. Clean Water Act was passed in '61. The EPA was founded in '62, and they beat up on just about everybody, any town of any size, to install sewage treatment plants. Now, when I was a kid, my folks wouldn't let me swim in the Merrimack River on the outgoing tide.
Can't swim in there now, John.
What's that?
I said you can't swim in there now.
Yeah, but that is a Newbury port's fault.
No, I know that.
Yeah. And that's another issue. That's a serious problem, and that's a good lesson, because there's no grand money left, you know? And the communities that are having these problems, when at the moment it looks like they're gonna have to figure it out for themselves. EPA is trying to work through with it, but, you know, anyway, that problem, with a few exceptions, got improved dramatically. It got improved to the point now that something in the order of 70% of all our water pollution, all lakes, streams, rivers, ocean, and whatever, comes not from sewage, not from industrial waste, but from simple stormwater runoff. Now, we're seeing an extreme example of that right now in the Carolinas, because there's a tremendous amount of pollution. As floodwaters rise, they drag stuff that should never be going downstream with it. And, you know, it's serious. So the EPA back in the 90s started beating up on the bigger cities, so-called Phase 1 of this program, where we're in Phase 2 of them. They got down to us little guys in '03, and we had -- this town of Newbury had a five-year permit in '03 that was finished to be done in '08. That permit has been postponed year after year after year since '08. So this is, we've had 10 years of sort of being in limbo, which I guess gave us plenty of time to plan for what we're gonna do. The reason for the big delay mostly was when the permit draft first came out, you know, everybody had a heart attack, because it was seriously, it was gonna be a real drag. It was gonna be a problem for almost any community. They've since watered, not necessarily watered it down, but made it, spread out the tasks, made it more user-friendly. So now it's not the horror show that it appeared to be back. I first got involved in 2010, and Martha and I and another person were driving home from a workshop up at Neco, and we were, I was suggesting to Martha that she simply drive into a bridge abutment and take the problem, go away.
I decided not to do that.
Fortunately, like most people, she didn't listen to me. So anyway, it just started finally on the 1st of July. The first task we had was to put out a so-called Notice of Intent, which is an abbreviated summation of what we are going to do over the next five years. I'm not gonna go into a lot of detail, just run through the major categories. It was due, it is due on the 1st of October. Through the help of a lot of people, it's actually in EPA and DEP's hands now. So I think I'm the only guy in the state that has any responsibility for this that sleeps at night. I got a call from a community last week. Would I help them fill out the forms?
Your name's out there now.
10-day pardon?
Your name's out there.
Well, I said, yeah, sure, and I think they decided that they'd be better off without me. And it's not like I've never heard that before, because I never heard that. I said, yeah, as long as you talk to me this week, don't bother to call me next week. You know, we're not gonna do over three days left to go. Basically, it's a simple form. It spells out all of the things we do. And there are six main categories. The first one is public education, and that is kind of what we're doing here. Get the word out any way we can. We have four target audiences, the general public, like here, commercial and institutional things like nursing homes, hospitals, schools. Governor Dummer, believe it or not, is in the MS4, in the MS4 area. Now, it's only the most densely populated, according to the census tract, the most densely populated parts of town that are in the MS4. Nobody cares particularly what we do outside that. Governor Dummer naturally is the most densely populated part of town, but guess what? The kids that go there are on their parents' senses. How many kids do you have? Three. And two of them are Governor Dummer. They don't count as Newbury residents. So we all know how clean and tidy teenagers are. However, that's the way it is. Industry, and we lucked out there, we have no industry within the MS4 region. We have quite a bit of industry in the way of marinas and Parker River, but they're not part of this. The second thing is public involvement, and we started out with this with a committee, all of which are members of, are residents of Newbury, most of which are town employees. Yvonne and I, Yvonne Boswell and I are volunteers, and Yvonne, incidentally, has been a tremendous amount of help in putting together the illicit discharge documents, which I'll get into later. The public involvement is to, you know, we're kind of doing this because you guys are selectmen, and so as a result, you're hearing a little bit about this, and hopefully it could be somewhat helpful. I gotta say that between you and Tracy, you've been extremely supportive of this program. I've been around long enough to think with horror what my life might be like maybe 30, 40 years ago, with different kind of government in those days. The third category is the one that's the most work, illicit discharge. It's a testing program for a number of contaminants. We have to test for two different kinds of pathogens, because we have to test for that contaminant that our receiving water bodies is contaminated with, which is fecal coliform. The permit requires that we test for anything in our impaired waters that are impairing, and so we've got to test for that. We also got to do a very similar test for E. coli, which makes not the slightest bit of sense in the world, but who would expect anything else? It tells us the same thing. It's a question of what the laws have written, and nobody had a chance to change the laws. We've got to test for chlorine, because that can do an awful number on fish in large quantities. It's perfect for disinfection in very small quantities. You get too much, it doesn't just kill the germs, it kills everybody. Ammonia, that's an indication of both wash water and laundry water and septic system leakage, as is, they call it surfactants, which is a detergent that went to college. Detectors basically is the other, and that's an indicator of household waste. So there's a few other things. Conductivity, which indicates it's heavy metal somewhere. Not expecting a lot of that, because this is not an industrial community. The fourth and the fifth, they call them, I forget what they call them, minimum control measures, which doesn't tell you a thing about it. But basically, they're things to do. The fourth and the fifth kind of run together. They basically ask the town to clean up their act as far as regulations go. Site plan review, make sure we have a siltation and erosion control bylaw, and that it's actually enforced, and that our subdivision rules and regs require the things, but as it turns out, basically what the state requires anyway. Now, through the last few years, we've managed to get most of that cleaned up. So those two issues, we got things to do, but there's not a great deal of work left for us to do there. We've got to do some tweaking on a couple of our regulations, but by and large, we're in pretty good shape there. And the final one, and by good fortune, you guys have been assisting on sweeping streets and cleaning out catch basins for a long time, and that's what, of course, is being done now. That, for some communities, is a major hit financially, but Newbury's doing it anyway. That is basically, it's referred to as good housekeeping. It's basically a system of just making sure that we are, we're practicing what we're preaching. Control of pesticides, control of not over fertilizing our recreational areas, our parks, and like everything else, a huge amount of record keeping, which is, you know, it's a paper chase. There's some reports that need to come out. This was the first one. And on the 1st of July, we got three D's, an overall stormwater plan, a program, which deals with everything here. It takes this and makes it this big, okay? And there's two illicit discharge plans that we have to put together. One is strategy. This is what generals worry about. This is the big picture. And then there's the tactics, which the sergeants and the captains worry about, which is how do you actually do these tests? And, you know, like rules, don't try to take the cover off a manhole. Let DPW do it, please, that kind of thing. So basically, that is it. We have the first one in. The three that I mentioned are underway right now. There are none of them that I can say is anywhere near complete, but I'm not that awfully worried. I think between now and then. I'm trying to get all of these written while I'm still ambulatory. I don't want to dump this on James. He's perfectly capable of doing it, but he has a department to run. So, and he's been a great, great person to work with in this. As an aside, James's guys are doing the testing now. When we started out, we were, you know, not exactly flush with cash. We got together a bunch of volunteers, made a stab of training, but they put this off so often, we let that kind of fade into the sunset. But having James's guys test is probably a good thing. They are, we've already started that, and they are quite enthusiastic. Obviously, having this experience is not bad for your resume. And it also, the timing for this is the spring and the fall, when you got a lot of rain, hopefully, and the outfalls are passing water, and you're not plowing and you're not eking. So it works out well, when the big pressure is off.
Do you have to be certified for that, John?
Pardon?
Do you have to be certified for that?
No.
Okay.
No. No, it's totally a volunteer thing. There are rules one has to follow. Yeah. And they're in the permit, and they're in reference documents. But you do not have to be either a certified lab or, you know, have any particular credentials. There is a local program that we have to follow, and that is training, making sure that the people know-- making sure that the people know what they're doing, and then a year, a year later, do it all again. So they've got to be re-upped. They can't do anything if they don't have a, and we're in the, we're in the process of setting up something formal, but strictly at the town level. Because people do come and go within the GPW, obviously. So it's important that they, that they do know what they're doing. But they're enthusiastic, and it's a bright game down there. I'm not interested in problems, just me.
How many catch basins do they test, all of them?
Well, they won't actually, hopefully, we won't have to do much in the way of catching, doing catch basins. I don't, honestly, I don't remember. I think we have something in the order of 200 catch basins in the, in the area. We have 400 a lot townwide, and about half of them are in the so-called MS4 area. But we would be only testing a catch basin if for some reason we can't get a decent test out of the outfall itself.
So how many outfalls are they testing?
There'll be ninety-seven in our area.
Only in the MS1 area?
Oh, MS4 area, yes.
MS4.
Yeah, there's about, there's, again, close to 200 outfalls all total, townwide. Now, we'll just have to see how that goes. The, the most recent permit does not require that we test them all. There are, I count thirty-four that for one reason or another are suspect. Now, there's areas like downtown Byfield, which actually we've already tested, and it's fine, surprisingly. Lots of, lots of small lots, old septic systems, very high groundwater table. All of the, all those things are not good. And everything came out fine. We did have a problem with surfactants, but we think it was, it was in the groundwater and leaking into the broken pipe that James fixed a year or so back. There's a long stretch along Main Street that, some of it was crushed. And so we suspected that was why we were getting bad reading. Fazlum Drive had some problems. Montgomery Park seems clean, but yet it's, again, it's very small lots, and it's densely populated. It's in the MS4 area anyway. The soil is great, that's the good news. Parker Street, not so densely populated, but the soil is terrible. So it's just a common sense, where would you expect to be a problem? And as, as I said, there's no industry in town, so residential is about the only thing. So we're lighting candles all over the place that there are no problems that we find. We, we don't want to find a problem. We do have to go look, but we hope we don't find anything. Yes, sir, Jeff.
I think it really has to be said, John, so that everyone knows, and I know you're not one to accept this, but, you know, John's an engineer. I've been around as selectman for a long time, and I can remember John gnawing at me and Martha about this, and you've been unbelievable in your dedication to the stormwater management task ahead of you, and Yvonne, and Martha and you. It's just unbelievable. I mean, the cost of doing this would have been pretty extensive, right? Other towns have to, I mean, you heard the word volunteer over and over and over, and John didn't mean to say it. So we have been lucky to have you. We've been lucky to have Martha, and the chemistry between.
Can I have that in writing so that I can?
Yeah, you've got, you've got one.
No, what you say is true of Martha and Yvonne. I just happen to be a guy with very weird hobbies.
We thank you.
Yeah, we'll thank you. Okay, any, any further questions?
Thank you for asking.
Right on.
Thanks, John.
Well said, Joe.
Okay, tonight, we're being joined by Senator Bruce Tower and Representative Lenny Mira. They're going to speak on the economic development bond bill. How are you guys tonight?
Good.
How are you?
Good.
Doing well.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for having us. Always a pleasure. The other one is good news.
I'm sorry, we don't have a packed house for you.
Well, that's okay. They must have heard we were coming.
They're all nice to me.
So we never come without paper in hand, and so we're going to give you this, and maybe Tracy can pass that around. And actually, I wanted to talk about a couple of things, Mr. Chairman, but centered around the economic development bond bill, but also sort of the end of the session and what's been happening with things that affect the town in particular. So we wanted to just give you a quick run-through of that, and then obviously be able to answer any questions. Representative Mira and I are particularly good at true and false questions, so if you want to take any of them, we'd be happy to, to answer them. So really quickly, at the end of the legislative session, we had a number of different bond bills that passed, as well as a state budget that passed. And because of the conversations that we have with all of you, we knew what some of your priorities are. And our first mission in coming to you tonight is to say thank you to each of you for having those conversations with us, so that we understand what your priorities are, and so that we can try to identify opportunities to respond to those priorities. And what we wanted to tell you tonight is a couple of examples where we think we've done that, and to talk about how we can proceed further. So the very first page in this packet, which is labeled "One Sideways", just talks about a couple of those things. And so the first one, and I'll run through these very quickly, is what we put into the state budget that is a reflection of the work that Representative Mira's been doing in his role as the chairman of the task force of the Merrimack River Beach Alliance on looking at regional dredging efforts. And the idea behind this is that rather than spend money on individual dredge projects, it may be feasible for us to purchase, in our part of the state, dredging equipment so that we can continuously be doing dredging projects with ten-year permits, and we don't have to treat each project as a new project with all the time and delay that that involves. It's based on a model that's happening in Barnstable County, and I'll let Lenny speak to that, but they have gone, Ian and Representative Phil, have traveled far and wide. They're going to do a travelogue for National Geographic about this, but they have researched extensively the opportunity that we might have. And this money is intended for that. And I am pleased to tell you that we have been able to convince the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission to be the administrator of this effort. And Peter Fippen is working on putting an RFP together so that we can get a respondent that will do this study and help to move us along. Lenny, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, this is a long-term thing. Some of them we've been working on for quite a while. If you would say to these RPA meetings, you'll know that attaining the permits is a monstrous task. Been working on it for quite a while now. And so we looked at a model done by Barnstable County, which twenty years ago, they purchased their own dredging equipment. And it worked out so well, they're actually buying a second dredge now. They found that they can dredge at sixty-five percent below market rates and save a lot of time and a lot of money doing the small rivers and streams in and around that area. And more importantly, they can use the material where it is needed as well. Because, you know, we have an issue on Plum Island. This material, if it works out well, the tests correctly, we can use the material, hopefully, just against at least some erosion. But it's more prudent, it's more efficient, it's more economical. It's something that we can do to just save a lot of time and money, a lot of grief, frankly, in attaining permits. It's a proven success down there. And let's face it, this problem's not going away. So many of us for a long time, so we're taking a lot of risk. We want to look at the next ten, twenty, thirty years at this problem, not just the next couple of years.
So based on that, when down the line came the economic development bond bill, the administration had proposed putting $50 million into that bond bill for dredging. We actually earmarked that $50 million to allow it to be used for equipment for dredging. And in addition to that, you'll see the next item on our list is $2.25 million to actually buy the equipment. So if things go the right way, and the study proves that this is feasible, there's a little bit of light at the end of the tunnel, that we may have some resources.
Yeah, I should point out, that study will be done by Woods Hole. They're going to study the records of past dredging to see what kind of materials came out of these local rivers and streams, and see how much volume of it came out as well. That will determine what type of dredges, dredges needed, also what size. And also, if, you know, something is larger than what a small dredge is dealing with, they'll look into the possibility of renting equipment as needed. But they will study what kind of materials, whether it's sand, fines, cobbles, or silt, and that will also determine where it can be used as well, whether it can be placed on the beach or offshore. Barnstable has been lucky, they have a lot of sand. They're able to put it on the beach. They do that, they deepwater it, and they spread it to make it part of that beach every year. It's just part of the regular means. And like I said, they save a lot of time and money doing that. And this study will determine if we're going to be able to do that.
So you're saying Woods Hole is going to operate that?
Correct. We should point out, there's two groups called Woods Hole. One is the oceanographic study, and another one does these studies for equipment. They're currently doing it in southern Maine, so Saco, Kittery, Kinabunkport is using them right now for this same exact kind of project, where they're researching the types of materials up in southern Maine to see what type of dredge could be useful to them.
Woods Hole group is an engineering company.
The important distinction, Chuck, is that the, the more academic group is the Woods Hole Oceanographic Institute. This is the Woods Hole group, which is a more, I don't know if I want to use the term mercenary, but is a for-profit group that does these kind of studies. And so this, it appears to be the group that will get the project. We cannot guarantee that because we have public bidding laws and procedures, but it appears to be that they would be the, the most favorable respondent based on the work that Lenny has done. Jim?
Who would actually be the owner of the dredging equipment?
An outstanding question, and that's part of what the study is meant to determine. Since we have no county government, as Barnstable County does, we don't have that option. There are a couple of different options. So an entity like MVPC could own the equipment, or we could also form a regional council of governments, which was the vehicle that we put into place when we abolished county government, that allows communities to get together for a particular purpose. So it could be a regional council of governments as well.
Bruce, I think that people should be aware, and correct me if I'm wrong, the MRVA and the work that you've done and Lenny have done, I mean, this started a long time ago with your recognition of sand management and how we can handle this on a regional basis. If you hadn't started, and Lenny, if you guys hadn't been aboard for that intellectual discussion, how long has that been, like five years? We wouldn't even.
It's been about ten years, believe it or not. When you first cornered me at the Old Newbury Country Club, under circumstances I won't expand upon, and I believe Ron Barrett was part of that cornering as well. And we talked about the need to operate on a regional basis. And without getting into a long diatribe about the MRVA, what's followed has been a historically successful regional effort to deal with these issues, and this will take us the next step. I would just point out editorially that originally, we did talk about, right out of the gate, purchasing our own dredging equipment, but what we quickly discovered is for the dredging of the Merrimack, which was our focus then, the equipment that would have been required, and you all saw what was used, would not have been feasible for us to purchase and maintain because it's just too big and would be too rarely used. And the federal government pays for the dredging of the Merrimack. So we decided that that would go on the back burner for a while. And now that we've dredged the Merrimack and are about to dredge it again, we can look at this kind of regional effort for the smaller waterways, including some that are in Newbury. So we're very hopeful about this. But this is also the opportunity, and I'll probably say this at least a dozen times tonight, to point out with regard to bond bill funding, that it creates an opportunity, but not a guarantee. So some of you have heard me say this, and Lenny heard me say it last night. And the way that I like to explain it is that it's as if the governor is going to a restaurant. Could be a restaurant in Newbury. And the governor has to decide what to eat, but the legislature writes the menu. So when we put these things into the bond bills, we put them on the playing field, but the governor has to choose to fund them in the administration. So the things that we're going to talk about tonight that are in bond bills, those are things where we are in play, but we have no guarantee of funding. And I want to stress that because the last thing we want to do is create a false expectation. And we can talk a little bit more about bond funding as we go, but, but the main thing we want to stress is it's an opportunity, but not a guarantee. And in order for that opportunity to be captured, we have to convince the administration and the Secretary of Administration and Finance to include our project in their capital spending plan, which is revised every year. So we need to be in that fight. So that's why, for instance, the money for the feasibility study is actually cash. That's operating dollars that is in the state budget. But the money for the purchase of the equipment is a capital expense, which would have to be borrowed for. So what we're anticipating is that this study will be done over the next couple of years, and will allow us to make our case to get into the capital spending plan. So that's sort of the way that it works. Now, the next two items are bond items. And the first one is a direct result of conversations that happened at that table. And again, one of the themes for tonight that we want to stress is the working partnership we have with all of you. And I want to thank you, JR, for convening those conversations, and Tracy was a part of them, Jeff was a part of them. I know the board was well represented. When we talked about the opportunity to create some sort of a facility on Plum Island, and at the time, the town was in the throes of trying to decide about whether to purchase a particular piece of property or not. Well, we thought it was a good idea to have something, by the way, a bathroom facilities, and if we could include it, an emergency response facility of some sort, to station equipment out on the island, so that when we have circumstances, when it may not be accessible, we could have pre-positioned equipment. So in the bond bill, the environmental bond bill, we saw that opportunity, and we specifically named 31 Plum Island Boulevard because at that point, you had decided to purchase that property. And don't be alarmed by the wording. It is very politically palatable to call something an emergency response facility. Personally, if I'm on the beach and have to go to the bathroom, that is an emergency. So we use that language to include that in the bill. And our goal is to work with you as you move forward with that project to try to free up some of these dollars to put into this building. Now, I will also bring up point number two about this funding, is that Lenny and I see our role is helping to facilitate the decisions that you and town meeting make. We do not want to tell you what to do. We would never do that. But when you make a decision, we want to help you. And so this is the direction that everyone wants to go in, as manifested by decisions here and at town meeting. We want to be helpful. So as you move forward with the project, and it takes more shape, we want to work with you and the administration to try to release these funds, to try to build a great facility on Plum Island that, that I would argue is long overdue. I want to speak for Lenny. I think he probably agrees. And we have a good case to make because to the north, there was a state-funded facility, a restaurant facility at Salisbury Beach. We think we are no less important than them, and so we think we've got a good case to make. And again, this is written in a way that's somewhat ambiguous, other than saying it's an emergency response facility. We want to work with you in the days to come to figure out how to get that money. And that would not have happened, would not have happened if the board and the town administrator didn't have the leadership on this that was needed to pull us together and to forge a way forward. And so we're happy to put that one in play.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So one that has, we, we did this actually, and I don't think many people were aware of it, but Tracy had sent us a message a while ago about some earmarked funding in a bond bill for a public safety facility that happens to be in the district of the current senate president. And she said, why can't we do this? Well, the next item is $1.5 million for your public safety, for your police station. Again, this is not a guarantee of funding. This is an opportunity to get funding. So what we said is that this is an important project for the town. We know that you've been wrestling with it for a while. I know, Damian, you have worked really hard on this. We had a meeting about trying to get some Farmers Home Loan Administration funding to make the debt burden a little bit lighter. We put this in, again, there is no guarantee of this, but this is another opportunity that as you move forward, we would like to try to release some state money to try to be helpful. That is it to say when you're building your budget that you should write in state contribution, $1.5 million, but it is to put an asterisk to say we could get all or part of that money. And this is my last message about bond bill funding, is that one way to think about it is that the administration has only so much money it can borrow and spend in a year for everything in the entire state. So it wants to spread that money out as much as possible. So if we're able to construct this in a way that maybe we could take this in bites and spread it over a number of fiscal years, at least more than one, it might enhance our opportunity to be able to get some of this money released. And again, we, our purpose tonight is not to flesh out all of the details of this or to get into depth about it, except to say, we want you to know that this opportunity is there, and it's there because the work has been done by all of you. And that's the kind of partnership that, that we want to have with you on an ongoing basis.
I might ask about these things. Is there any sense of us writing to the governor to say, these are really important to us?
Yes. Yes. And we are actually contemplating perhaps getting some folks out to visit, to talk about this. And what we need to plan, Damian, is when the right time is, when you feel that it's concrete enough and we're at that point where it's teed up. We used to use the term shovel-ready, I wouldn't use that term for this, because it needs to be to the point where it's conceptually ready, where we connect the case, and we'll work with you for that. But, there will be an opportunity for heavy lobbying. So, yes, and we'll work with you on that.
I have another question. The timeline for this, like what is this?
So, bond bills typically last from five to ten years. So, our recommendation would be to try to get moving in the next couple of years on this, but it isn't like operating dollars, where you have to spend it by the end of the fiscal year. This authorization will last for a while, and what happens with all of these authorizations is, generally speaking, after five years, the Secretary of Administration and Finance will start to look for things that can be de-authorized, because for all of these that we carry, our bond rating agencies look at it and say, "Well, you're carrying too many authorizations, and these could all spring to life and create a heavy debt burden on the Commonwealth's books." So, we've got at least a five-year window, and again, we've got a little bit of time. If this was operating money, we would be saying, "We're going to go knock on the door to the governor tomorrow, because we only have until the end of July to spend it." This is not that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to defer to Lenny for a minute before I launch into the next subject, which you're really going to like.
No, just to let you know, to take a broad view, you know, the Massachusetts economy, as you probably know, has done very well the last several years, but for whatever reason, tax revenues really haven't kept up with the increase in GDP and our low unemployment. But, so for the last several years, the governor was supposed to make nine C cuts at the end of the fiscal year. That changed this year, we're actually coming in ahead of expectations with tax revenue, which is a great thing. And of course, our number one priority every year is school funding, chapter seventy, and special education as well, regional transportation. And, you know, happy to say that this year, it looks like there's going to be a record amount spent on that. We made it a priority, we make it a priority just about every year, and I don't want to make it sound like it's just the two guys in this room, it's a regional thing, it's a team effort, it's a bipartisan thing. We've got a lot of cooperation on that front, because it's a priority. Like I said, we go to those meetings with Triton, they've been, you know, a little frustrating in the past, but finally, we know we have some good news on that front. And, when we ended up with a budget surplus, we made it known to the governor that this is money where we want to use it in, we have to use it in, we can't use it all there. There's some rules in place that make us put part of any budget surplus in our rainy day funds, we're just obligated to do that, which is not a bad thing, we want to see that funded. By doing that, it improves our bond rating, that makes our borrowing costs a little bit lower as well. So, putting some money in the rainy day fund is always a great thing, but anything left over, we're trying to steer towards local aid, especially chapter seventy and educational funding.
So, that's a great segue. Before we go there, Chuck, I wanted to say thank you. You and I had a former conversation about that Plum Island facility, one afternoon, and I don't want to neglect mentioning that, it was very helpful, and your commitment to it.
Much appreciated for that.
So, well, thank you.
Well, it's sorely needed, and I think that they don't make land anymore, especially in the very, very center of town. Great opportunity, I'm glad we got it.
Well, your call was very important to us, so thank you. And Tracy, I think, sharpened well over a hundred pencils on that whole thing, and did a great job. So, as we move to the topic of education, which we know is very important for all of you and for the town, I call your attention to the letter that starts on page three. And again, I'm not going to read this, except for I'm going to tell you that the genesis of this letter was the meeting we had at Triton to talk about educational funding, where we had a panel.
This is enough.
Yes, with our auditor and with the legislative delegation, many of you were at it, and we made a commitment that we would try to push really hard this year for a few items. Now, two things happened. One, as Lenny pointed out, we started to see the benefits of an economic recovery in a different way. So, what we've been seeing is increased employment, but the state wasn't seeing increased revenue, not to the extent we had projected. What changed, we think, was that we started to see wage growth, which is the second half of an economic recovery. So, people were getting more compensation, they were getting bonuses, they were getting increase in wages in their paycheck, and we saw the benefits of that. So, as we said that night, we were going to make a commitment to funding the things that we had already promised, rather than new things that everybody would have ideas on spending money on. This letter was the product of that meeting, and what I want to call your attention to, we actually added it so you could see the number of people that co-signed this letter in the legislature. So, once the Triton delegation got moving on this, we got a tremendous amount of support. Now, we always tell all of you that we need your help in networking, right, to get people who aren't your legislators to sign on to this. Clearly, it worked. We had a tremendous movement, and basically, just to recite quickly, and I'm going to take you now to page seven, because I'm going to talk about the results. We were making the argument that the state has made basic commitments to regional school transportation, to special education, and to the things that are included in the foundation budget. What we argued in the letter is we need to increase minimum per pupil aid, we need to increase regional school transportation, and we need to fully fund the cost of special education, particularly the circuit breaker. I'm pleased to report to you that as a result of the effort that we all worked on, we increased minimum per pupil aid by ten dollars a student, from twenty to thirty dollars, we bumped regional school transportation by a significant percentage, and we are fully funding this year the special education circuit breaker. Now, we know that stuff is really important to you, and again, because of the partnership we have, that makes it really important for us. And I'm not going to go into too much of this chart, but I'm going to ask you to now turn to page number eight. And I'm doing this because I'm not very good at math, so I'm not going to do the addition or subtraction for you, but I want you to look on page eight, the very top line, chapter seventy, you can see an increase for Triton there that is not insignificant. But what I really want to call your attention to, one, two lines down, regional school transportation. And I want you to note the difference between last year and this year. Last year is the penultimate column, and this year is the last column on the right. And you can see the kind of increase that we generated together for regional school transportation. And so, again, continuing on with the theme of the evening, we have a partnership, and we want you to know that we take that very seriously. We try to work on the priorities that we share, and our goal tonight is to tell you about some of the things that happened at the end of the session as part of the partnership. I'll defer to Lenny. I'm going to breathe.
Oh, like I said, this has always been a priority for us, something we fight for every year, and like I said before, also, it was a pleasure to come here with good news, but we wanted to know about it, it's a team effort, and we're going to come to you again later this year, hopefully to continue this effort. We want to keep doing this, it's an investment. You know, I came with this career as a businessman, one that always talked about taxes and regulations in this state, but I tell my fellow businessmen, the reason businesses come to the state, the reason they stay here and grow here, is because we have one really good natural resource, and that, of course, is our brainpower, and that's a result of our educational system, which I'll argue is probably the best in the country, best of the school system in America today. If we were a country, we would ride right up there, we're the best in Europe and across the world. And, that's the reason why companies come here, it's the way they stay here. And so, we tell people, this is an investment, it's something we want to see continue to happen, and Triton does a great job, they really do. I believe they spend below the state average per student, and their test scores are above average. And what would you ask? They've done a great job, it's something we want to continue to fight for and continue to fund.
So, I'm going to ask, what's the story with the budget review?
Foundation budget review commission. All right, so, I knew that was going to come up, I'm surprised it came up this quickly.
We're talking about Triton.
So, no, what's important, and what you heard us talk about the last time we were together on the subject, Alicia, is that the foundation budget was meant to be reviewed every few years. When we passed that bill in nineteen ninety-three, believe it or not, I was in the legislature when that happened. And, I did not agree with the way the foundation budget was put together, because I think it was negative toward communities in our area. But putting that aside for a moment, it really never was seriously reviewed until we fought in our delegation to amend a bill in the House and the Senate to create that review, happened in two thousand fifteen. And what it confirmed was, there was a growing disparity between what we were mandating and what we were paying for. And so, and that continues to grow, by the way. But, the foundation budget review commission, in my humble opinion, did a really good job at half of the job. And the half was to show the places where the foundation budget was not meeting the requirements of educating a student in Massachusetts. The half that it didn't do so well at was addressing inequalities as between school districts. And that work is still left to be done, and I'll be completely honest with you about that. So, the foundation budget review commission had a number of recommendations, two stand out as being the biggest. One is, in the foundation budget, we use a very low number for the assumed number of students in special education. I'm not talking about circuit breaker, I'm talking about the allocation of sort of non-circuit breaker special education students, that's the first piece. The second piece is the cost of health insurance, which we all know, you've dealt with it at the town level, as well as the school district has dealt with it, has been escalating. So, those two things together are probably about a billion dollars, and if you look at all the recommendations of the foundation budget review commission, they're more than that.
Right.
And so, we have been taking bites out of it, and to his credit, the governor proposed a budget that puts some money into the health insurance piece, we also have that in our budget, but we've got a long way to go. One of the things that didn't happen at the end of the legislative session was that the senate had a bill, and the house had a bill, and as much as we love each other, we could not agree on a final bill. And, people will ask why, and there's lots of reasons why. The best way I can explain it is that the senate was trying to develop a long-term structure, and the house said, "This is an emergency, we need to do something more short-term for the next couple of years." We thought we could blend those approaches together, we could not in the end, but I guarantee you, we will be back at it on day one, and we will be filing legislation to fully fund the recommendations of the foundation budget review commission. One of the things that we feel is important, that is absolutely imperative in any bill that passes, is to mandate that there will be a periodic review, no less than three years, no more than five. In that period of time, we need to continuously review this, so we don't wind up with this big disparity of, you know, a billion plus dollars that is hard to address in a couple of years. So, we're going to be back at it, and we welcome your thoughts.
And that's not unique to Triton, so you must have help to have a process of a little go on. I know Brockton's not very happy with it, he's a fellow of it.
Right, so here's an interesting thing. Part of the difficulty in dealing with the two bills was trying to find the balance between what we do for communities with more low-income students, as measured by pre-introduced school lunch, versus communities have less of that, and what should be the split. And we always make the argument, we need to consider everybody. We're sympathetic to Brockton, Lawrence, Polio, Springfield, New Bedford, we're sympathetic to them, but we have a need to.
That's right.
So, we have allies, but we need to figure out the right way to partner.
Okay.
And we didn't quite get there.
Okay.
At the end of the session.
Okay, so, is there anything that we can do to help you? Do you know how to reach me? I'm more than happy to help you.
Communication is the most important thing, Alicia, it really is. All our conversations are very, very, very helpful. We spoke to a number of you on many occasions, and it's always helpful.
And you are always very good at stepping forward to help us, as the Triton community has been, and part of what we want to show you tonight is it was not in vain.
Good.
Right, and so, now we have a little bit of money on the table, in fact, I'm not going to get into it, but the last sheets in your packet show you the current revenue collections, and the fact that we're still on a trend to beat benchmark. So, as we have that new revenue, and we have revenue from two additional sources, from gaming and from marijuana, we're going to be looking to put that into education, at least in part as well, with the caveat that we want to pay for the things we've promised before we get into new things.
Yes, because it's so important to a town like Newbury, and I guess I can speak for Raleigh and Salisbury as well, with Triton, is that we are an average school district, but we are a very small community. So, we cannot even override our way out of the problems that are coming down the pipe with Triton. The Commonwealth really has to be a partner with us and fully fund, like you're saying, put the money where they promised it, where it ever was, because if it was up to the three towns to pay for Triton alone, which is the trajectory in which it's going at now, then we won't have schools.
So, that's a very good segue into my last point on education, and then I'm going to bring you back to municipal government for a minute. One of the challenges that we will face, and this is not true for every community in the Commonwealth, but it's true for a lot of them, is that we have a formula that is based on enrollment, and Triton enrollment has been decreasing. If you look on page twelve, and if you look at the rightmost column, you'll see foundation enrollment. So, in FY oh-eight, it was thirty-two fifty-seven, and FY eighteen is twenty-three ninety. So, it's been steadily declining, and that's not anyone's fault, it's a demographic fact. So, we're going to hit a bit of a crash here at some point, because school costs are increasing, fixed costs are increasing, but enrollment is declining. And we're not quite to the crisis point yet, but we're going to be, because this trend is true for a lot of communities. So, as long as we have a formula that's based on enrollment, enrollment's going down, the costs are going up, we're going to have a problem. So, at some point, we're going to need to revisit this. And I will leave you with that thought, I don't have any answers tonight, I don't know if Lenny does, except for, we're going to have to focus on it.
No, in closing, I'll just say, this is just my thoughts, not necessarily the senator's. I always try to steer as much money as we possibly can to local aid, because quite frankly, municipalities spend our tax dollars a lot more effectively and efficiently than we do at the state level. And, I wish at the state level, we were half as effective and efficient as you guys are. You watch every dime, I know you are, you're tight with it, I wish you could say the same well state government, but that's why I always try to shift as much money as possible to local aid, in any way possible, and without whatever form possible. But, it's a priority, it always will be, and, you know, let's keep the lines of communications open as much as possible, and we'll keep doing this.
Thank you.
I'd like to take a minute to thank both of you, all the personalities you deal with, all the people you have to get to know, the needs you listen to, the nights away from home, the weekend days away from home, I appreciate the sacrifice that you make, and you're, both of you, you're always there to listen, and I'm very grateful for that.
I'm happy to do it.
Thank you.
You're doing a good job representing your constituents, at least in our district.
We appreciate that partnership. And just one last thing, JR, because I left it out, on page seven, if you look under Newbury general government, and if you look at the top line, under unrestricted general government aides, which interestingly enough is referred to with the state house as aga, you saw a modest increase there as well. So, we're trying to push some money back just for general government. So, we appreciate, and again, the reason we really wanted to come tonight is to let you know these things have happened, that it will take partnership to capitalize on some of them, but to let you know that we think we have a really effective partnership, and we appreciate your kind words, and we will reflect them back to you, that we appreciate the time all of you take to communicate with us, the patience that you have with us, because sometimes we don't get the instant result that we would all like, but the fact that we can continue to work together and plot a course for the future together is really important.
I think I'd like to add a little bit too to what JR said. If you look at just the things you guys discussed today, and Lenny, you make a good, you know, partner to Bruce, because if you think of the things that Bruce, even before you came upon the scene, has been potty to, I mean, everything in our town, from storms up from Island to the environment, every issue this town is heading. Our representatives, and certainly our state senator, has been there, and right to the cut of, you know, going to the mat for anything that needed to be done. I've stood in storms when I was chair with Bruce on Plum Island, and this, just like this, everything that has been an issue in this town, you know, Lenny, Bruce, you've taken on. So, I want to thank you, and you know so many people by name, it's just been great.
Thank you.
I don't know how you keep it on straight.
And that day that you can't remember what you were going to say, I want to be there. Best public speaker I've ever seen.
I have a wonderful picture somewhere, Jeff, of you and Doug Packer in a storm on the island, where you were literally turning into a snowman. You were turning white right in front of us as a snowman.
I'm turning white, Lenny.
Well, and you might have looked like the Abominals, I don't know, but you were turning into a snowman, so.
We've had some great years.
We really appreciate the partnership.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Have a good day.
Thanks, guys.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Since we jumped around, did anyone pick up on anything?
We got the town administrator's report, and the other thing from meeting updates was that the building committee had asked that we start to try and get the word out. So I was thinking about writing a letter to the editor about the process to date, so people understand where the site been, where the process for the building is at currently, but didn't want to do that without talking to the board first.
I think that's good, thank you.
And Jen certainly facilitated any questions.
I think it's a good idea.
All right, so I'll undertake to start drafting that, and then...
You're going to send it on behalf of the board, or you decided by yourself?
I think I could just sign it by myself.
Yeah.
Great. Okay, administrator's report.
Glad I've got some good news to report tonight after that. Free cash certificate was certified. I mean, we worked very hard to get it done prior to town meeting. We got our notification last week. It came in at one million, five hundred ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars. So with all the spending we did last year, we're still up over a hundred thousand dollars in our certification from last year. The even better news is the ambulance enterprise fund certified their free cash this year at a hundred and ninety-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars. This was the first year that we were able to assess a hundred percent of our indirect costs. So the costs for doing their accounting, paying their payroll, all the indirect costs that the town incurs on the ambulance company's behalf were charged against the enterprise fund, and they still certified their free cash at a hundred, almost a hundred and ninety-five thousand, which will allow them to purchase a new ambulance next year. So they're a little ahead of schedule on that as well. So it has been successful. We're in the third year, and, you know, we weren't sure where it would come in at, but it is indeed self-supporting. So it's great, great service.
It's not so much the price of the new ambulance as it is to stock it. It's half the price of the ambulance to stock it. That's scary.
With the expensive lives.
Yeah.
Well, I think too, that it didn't happen by accident. The guys have done a great job, everyone involved, so it's good.
Yeah, super job, and it's a wonderful service to be able to provide to the residents. The fieldhouse project, as Selectman Jesposin mentioned, is complete, awaiting an occupancy permit, I believe. The septic system is done and completely functioning. The fields are indeed in wonderful condition now that the town's DPW has taken over the maintenance. They are now, they're also, they're doing not only the mowing, but also the fertilization program. We're mowing them twice a week, where previously we only mowed them once a week. And by bringing that in-house, we save approximately twenty-two thousand dollars a year, and we're getting twice as many mows. So that's been a definite positive situation there. The DPW has also constructed the retaining wall, the handicapped ramp, and installed the fencing that you see in that area. They've done that this season. There were some questions raised about portable facilities, line striping, things like that. Just so everybody's aware, those are done by the users of the field, for people that rent the fields. That's not something that the town is involved in. And obviously, we're extremely pleased to be able to complete a project that has been stalled for, I don't know how many years it was in the works, before I got here, so it had to be at least ten, fifteen years ago when it was begun.
I can't remember when the foundation went in, but it's been a long time. I was in the selectmen when I worked on it, so...
Right, right. So we're really excited to see that done. Obviously, you heard from the Senator and the representative about the bond bill and the three hundred and fifty thousand bathrooms. We will continue to petition our governor and lieutenant governor to ensure that we get that funding. We are set to close on that property in the next two weeks, I believe, should everything move forward accordingly. The other thing I wanted to discuss with you, Plum Island vacuum pumps. We have been apprised by the city of Newbury Port that the vacuum pumps at the Olga Way Station are beyond their useful life. They generally are effective for approximately ten years. They are twelve years old now. They are starting to show fatigue, and they, obviously, as you can imagine, the pumps are the heart of the entire system. So if they should go down, we're going to have significant problems. Newbury Port's gone out to bid. They're looking at replacing four of the pumps for a total project cost of two hundred and forty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars. The pumps obviously operate the entire island. Fifty-nine percent of the uses on the island are Newbury residents. So we'd be looking to share the cost at about a hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars. But what I would need is a vote of the board of selectmen to make that appropriation, because it would be coming from the Betterment Fund. So when everyone hooked up, they had to pay the Betterment. That Betterment pays the debt service and can be used for any repairs to the system. So, but it's just an appropriation made by the board of selectmen.
Okay, so we don't have to go to town meeting?
No.
So I move to appropriate the funds from the Betterment Fund in the number of...
One hundred forty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars.
One hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars. Second one.
Discussion?
So the four pumps, the four pumps that, on Olga Way, you said they need to be replaced, is that the only ones, or are there other ones?
Nope, that's it.
That's it?
Those are the only ones that need to be replaced.
And so how come we're sharing the cost with Newbury? Four. Sorry if I missed that.
That's okay. The majority of the users of the system on Plum Island are ours, and that Betterment Fund was established for this purpose, and it can only, those funds can only be used for the water and sewer system.
So this is the only, these are the only vacuum pumps on the island, the Olga Way? Or are there other ones?
I believe there are five, but they're going to be replaced by four.
Okay. So they're going to replace all five? The ones on Olga Way are the only ones that are in Newbury, is that how?
Yes, that are running Plum Island. Yes, yes, that serves the island.
So the pump station is on Olga Way?
Is on Olga Way.
Serves all of the islands?
Yep. It serves Newbury and Newbury Port.
But there's more pumps that are not on the island.
Well, there wouldn't be another bunch of the city.
Right, absolutely.
That was, okay, so I didn't know when you said the vacuum, I thought, and this could be myself, that the only vacuum system they had in Newbury Port was on the island. I didn't realize they had vacuum systems throughout the whole...
I don't know what the systems are for this city.
That's a good question. I don't know exactly how the rest of their system works, but I do know we have a facility with one of that, and some that need to be replaced.
I mean, one of the things that was going through my mind, and I'm sure this has been procedure, or would have been a simulated procedure, but I imagine that Newbury Port's share of reinstalling the pumps, or fixing the pumps, or putting new pumps in, comes out of troughs? Is it coming out of their Betterment? Is it coming out, so it's not coming out of the sewer and water maintenance budget?
We were both, I wasn't here when it was originally established, but as part of the administrative consent order, both communities had to set up this fund for this purpose, just as purpose, yeah.
So I guess the only other question is, why did we go two years past the useful life?
I can't answer that question.
Consider it, yes.
Well, I just haven't, you know, some of the issues that have happened with that system, I would think we need to pay a little better attention to the improvements and make sure we don't end up, you know, if three pumps failed, we'd be in a real scramble, and it would probably cost half of it as much directly.
But we don't manage that system, it would be too much.
I was just going to say, that's kind of like us telling the electric company, hey, you pulls out, you got to fix that, you know? We can point the problem out, but we're not the authority to fix it, so...
And we do have tremendous communication going back and forth between the two communities. We're aware of what's going on relative to the systems on the island.
For better or worse, I think it's, you know, in good faith to, you know, be able to address the problem.
They kind of had their hands full with the fire hydrants, too, if you can remember that. They replaced the bolts of every, one of the miserable things, so...
And once we make this appropriation, when will they, do you know when those...
They've already gone out to bid, they're ready to go.
Okay.
Okay.
Did we make the motion?
Yeah, in a second, then we run the discussion.
You have any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. And the parking clerk asked me to notify your request, actually, for the board of selectmen approval to provide an insert in the real estate tax bills. She has proposed that we once again offer a one-dollar discount on parking permits if they're purchased online by March thirty-first. We did this last year as well. The one-dollar discount is only for online purchases. They, let's see, they, permits that are purchased online, they issue a temporary parking permit that's valid for only two weeks, that you actually print out and tape it on the inside of your rear window in the lower-left corner until the permanent one arrives in the mail. They're available mid-December in the town clerk's office for mailing or in-person purchases for those people who wish to do it that way. You need to provide a proof of residency, and the vehicle registration must also be provided. So the fees for this year will be residents ages sixteen to sixty-four would be twenty-five dollars, residents aged sixty-five plus is twenty. We'd also like to offer the twenty-dollar fee for veterans, and replacement stickers are going to be five dollars.
Motion to a law.
Second.
Discussion?
How, what kind of money does that bring in for the town, do you know?
I'd have to look, I don't know the exact amount we brought in last year. I'll have to look it up. What else I know?
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
DPW, one of their next projects, they're going to be doing some cleanup at the Library of Gardens over there on the stone wall. We're going to get that all taken care of, hopefully this fall. Olga Way project is next on their list, and they'll be heading down to the Landing as well, to finish that up.
It's a huge project they're going to... Can you describe Olga Way project just a little bit for those people who are not up to date on it?
Sure. The area, it's been described as a parking lot, I think it was a baseball field, I'm not sure what it was historically also used for, I don't know, it's been used for storage. Storage.
I was told there were bathrooms once upon a time.
Bathrooms at one point in time, a staging area. During my tenure here, we have numerous issues arise in which things were dumped there. It was used as a staging area without our knowledge. So what we're going to, what the project has proposed, and it's gone through permitting now, is to really identify what's ours, what's owned by the town. We'd use the same type of fencing that you've seen us put up at the center, Plum Island Center, and at the recreational fields. Identify it through the fencing, put a gravel base there. We're going to move the stockpiles of sand that are there, which aren't actually on our property, onto our property. And that will be an area for staging of emergency equipment apparatus, DPW equipment as needed. But we would plan to gate it off so that we wouldn't have some of the same problems we've been experiencing.
The random dumping and...
Yep. There are also some drainage improvements taking place on Olga Way itself.
Yeah.
Erica?
It's a great area to put sand, too, if we, if this dredging ever does take place. Again, stockpiling sand, I can't tell you how great it is to have that there when needed.
And I don't want to take the conclusion of your report, I'd like to thank you. You know, a free cash situation, a financial situation, has so much to do with your expertise in management and caring, and our wishes. And I thank you.
Thank you. We've got a great time.
To add to that, I can't thank the highway department enough for what they have done. They've done so many roads this year. They just finished the last two, Piss and Drive and Wayside Avenue. Those come out really nice. The entrance going into Wayside on Central come out really, really well. They have also raised one hundred and twenty-three manholes this summer. That's a stunning amount of work. So, great kudos to them, thank you.
Are they on, when will they have all the roads paved?
All of them? No. Will be, not the two seasons, we'll probably have the majority of them done, and we'll be starting...
I mean, we're really running out of bad stretches of road. There isn't much left.
No, all the pastures, I think, are done, aren't they?
They may, more than, probably closer than ninety percent of all the major roadways are done now.
Yeah.
It's not just the paving of it, it is the preparation to pave, raising the manholes, redoing the drains that crushed and all this. That's the major work. You know, it's like when you paint your house, you got to fix the clay walls first before you paint the house, you know? You don't see that part of the work, you just see the paint. This guy's really great at it, we're very fortunate to have him.
Good. Do we have any warrants to sign?
Yes.
Motion to sign warrants?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we did, we've done meeting updates, no executive session. Any citizens' concerns? Seeing none?
Motion to adjourn?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.